Okay, starting with Don Schrader, followed by Silvio Delangelo, Tony Perard. Mr. Schrader.
Did Jesus of Nazareth actually live? If he did, did the writers of the Bible accurately tell Jesus' teachings and actions? In centuries since, did those people who copied and translated the original writings do a good job and make no important mistake? The Bible says, "Jesus spoke about God as our loving Father who answers our prayers for help." Matthew 7:11, "If you then, who are evil, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will your Father, who is in heaven, give good gifts to those who ask him?" If Jesus actually lived, and if he said that verse, sadly, he was not telling the truth. Hundreds of millions of people throughout human history have prayed desperately and received no help. I wish, I wish we had a fair, loving, all-powerful, parent God who would rescue all who prayed for help from war, starvation, cancer, rape, tornadoes, family violence, torture, and much more. I'm humbled to realize I swallowed and I spread false advertising for God for many years. I was a sincere Christian preacher in the 1960s. I had not yet learned to question the Bible deeply and to reject lies. I thank many who helped me open my eyes.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Before I call the next person, I should mention that the process for public comment is that the light on the podium will be great for the first one and a half minutes. Then the bell will ring notifying you that you have 30 minutes left. And after that, the buzzer, excuse me, 30 seconds left. I just wanted to stay with the rest of the time that took so long. 30 seconds left, which means you should wrap it up and then completing the two minutes with a buzzer. Next is Mr. Silvio Delangelo, followed by Tony Perard, followed by Charles Arisum.
Mr. President, Counselors, you just heard from Mr. Perry and Chief Eden, the biggest bunch of double talk and BS that we've ever heard in this council. If you bother to read the agreement, there is nothing, nothing that justifies what they did. You know, the whistleblower is known by everybody in APD. He should be honored here. He or she should be not kept a secret and used as an excuse to refer it to DOJ, FBI. DA Brandenburg was right in charging the two killers of James Boyd. Actually, now, for the first time, has a video and audio recording of it. DA Brandenburg was right when saying the city's in crisis. And we citizens who care have lost faith in you and our other government leaders, including the DOJ, who have betrayed us. The state law, the New Mexico Inspection of Public Records Act, is repeatedly ignored with your blessing, something never mentioned by the DOJ. Most of you have always put your loyalty to the political party and our city's corrupt city and APD leadership before we, the people. You bless and even promote rampant, rampant and fiscal irresponsibility, the unjustified $100 million-plus ABQ, not-rapid transit, white trails, and other tax-wasting, right health, to satisfy your special interest groups. We will be paying over $4 million to Dr. James Ginger and his people who has no power. We don't even know what his task is in the resolution. You are making this new police oversight agency powerless, likely who have no power to recommend changes. You know, this truly is a land of hopelessness and apathy and not enchantment, and you have all helped make it that way.
Next is Mr. Tony Perard, followed by Charles Arisum, followed by Diana Goodman. Thank you very much. If you would hold your applause.
Thank you.
Mr. Tony Perard.
What does it take to get through to you people? The police killings need to be answered for. The DOJ continues to spit in the faces of the people who need justice while tons of taxpayer dollars go to waste to out-of-state corporations and management companies trying to tell us how to live. Well, the DOJ has a harsh lesson to learn. As their treasonous ways continue, they have failed in their policies across the country, just as they have failed here in New Mexico, taking up an entire floor of the Hyatt nearby, living very well on taxpayer dollars. What has been accomplished after two years of taxpayer dollars being wasted? More excuses, but no results. Is constitutional law coming, or has it been here the entire time? It's a no-brainer, Damon. Your dog and pony show is nothing more than smoke and mirrors. Citizens can do a better job, and there is still no citizen oversight in any department. The rest of the city council and the mayor should resign. Why has the U.S. Marshal and FBI sat idly by and made no felony arrests? The system is showing exactly how crooked and corrupted it is and how law enforcement is. But Damon can't handle the truth, you see. He'd rather send U.S. Marshals to my house to threaten and intimidate me. He has never reached out like I have. Damon Martinez and his crew and the screwballs of Striker Greenwood and Bailey, us taxpayers want our money back. All you do, you all don't have the right to set policy in the court, let alone a judge play stupid. It's time, Damon, for you to get off your ass and make those felony arrests, or we, the people, will take back our government. The first arrest should be yours, Damon, for treason. Rest will follow. It's time for CIP citizen and [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Perard. Next is Charles Arisum, followed by Diane Goodman, followed by Bree Sanger.
Evening, Counselors. It's about three years ago that I came to the council and informed you that the wheels were falling off at the Police Oversight Commission. We all know how that turned out. The taxpayers here ended up putting some money in my pocket, and three of the commissioners resigned, calling it a fraud. I'm here again tonight to let you know that there's wheels falling off on another one of your boards that's very important, and that's the personnel board. And instead of wasting my time here, I decided to go ahead and take this information to the Attorney General and the administration. Empty seat over there. Is, got to, will be answering to the Attorney General tomorrow, so we'll see how that goes. But I just wanted to inform you all of that. I've given President Gardner some information on that, and so we need to take a hard look at what's going on there, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arisum. Next is Diana Goodman, followed by Bree Sanger, followed by Jennifer Ott.
Council President and Council Members, I would like to thank Chief Eden for voluntarily communicating to the public the issue within APD. It is another step towards an open and transparent government. But as some of you know, there's a lot of lingering questions, and we certainly hope that this will get resolved soon and we can get it put behind us rather than let it continue. I would also like to thank Carrie Brandenburg for her bold and altruistic comments at her press conference about Albuquerque's crisis. The complete conference can be viewed by Googling Charles Arisum's YouTube channel. I do disagree with her on how long it will take to solve our problems. With strong leaders that lead with truth, integrity, transparency, and openness, we will begin to recover. One of you city counselors has personally told me that all departments are dysfunctional within Albuquerque's government. Many, if not all, of you know this. We need to stop trying to fix our crisis by band-aiding the problems with expensive PR campaigns and put those efforts into directly fixing the problems. In order to get stability, we must just tell the truth and deal with it so we can start addressing what so many of us already know. Be bold in your altruistic leadership. Abraham Lincoln was bold in his leadership and impeccable honesty during our country's divisive times. Learn from him. His legacy is still alive and well today, 150 years later. As with any dysfunction, the corrective actions begin by asking the hard questions and acknowledging the problems rather than using Band-Aid diversion tactics. Only then can we, as a community, begin to unite on making Albuquerque be all that it can be. Leaders, please, just tell the truth and deal with our problems ethically and transparently in all of your actions. Don Harris, I live in your district. You've canceled several meetings with me. You're running high, running high tactics. I'm still waiting for that meeting. Fixing Albuquerque's problems are way beyond pickleball.
Thank you very much. Bree Sanger, followed by Jennifer Ott, followed by Ilse Beal. And if you would state your name for the record, please.
I've been before you for three and a half years, and you call me Songer until today. I'm, just goes to show me that you really don't listen to us.
Ms. Songer, please, go ahead.
I'm not ready. Sit. You've seen me do this with my dog every time. She's a service dog. Now I'm ready. President Gardner, I'm embarrassed to say that you don't listen to any of us, that we take up your time, and we're just a pain in your butt. I'm sorry about that. Ms. Gibson, I apologize to you. It's interesting that you looked at me last time I was in front of you and you were, didn't know what I was talking about. And yet, I've been in front of you for three and a half years. That's my fault. But what is your fault? And all of your faults is that you have a fiduciary duty to me and to my community to protect me. Shame on you for not doing your fiduciary duty. You have let us down. You have taken my property, which was once worth $158,000, and made it worth $58,000 because you have not protected me. Mr. Winter, I am your constituent. There is a vote coming up. I will not be voting for you. I will stand on every corner I can stand on and hold signs, pass out papers that say, "You do not protect me." I want you to step down. You've been asked to step down by Sue Flint. There is $125 million bribe. There is wire fraud from you all. This needs to be looked after. If you don't know what I'm talking about, do your job and figure out what I'm talking about, because Sue Flint knows.
Next is Jennifer Ott, followed by Ilse Beal, followed by Sue Flint.
Good evening. I still support honest APD officers regardless of what has happened. Domestic terrorism committed by treason Americans are being paid by foreign cartels that are trying to destroy our city, overthrow our leaders, murder our citizens, and slow-kill operations, and kidnapping children statewide for sex slavery. These traders think American lives are a color-coded game reminiscent of Nazi Germany, being paid in cash, drugs, jobs, sex, cars, houses, you name it, they'll take it. Terrorists are using the cars they are given as weapons. Our honest police officers need to be on guard more than ever. Police units are targets for fatal staged accidents nationwide. The higher ranking the officer, the greater the bounty. And some of these bounties go all the way up to $50 million or more for one officer. This is how huge these operations are in these cities across America. The color-code gang stalking game is over in this city. 60 to 100 traders being arrested every night. That's a lot of people. That's 2,500 people on the average every month. APD is winning the war against these terrorists. I am thankful to the pilots of APD and Curlin Air Force Base for standing against color-code gang stalking, especially being prepared in full gear against threats of pipe bombs this past week that happened on San Mateo and Central. And they got the F-16 fighters out way quick. There was a hotel that was supposed to be blown up, and thankfully, you know, my friends with APD as well as the U.S. Air Force prevented a lot of children getting hurt over at Highland High School. But I want to thank you for all your efforts, and I have a lot of respect and admiration for each one of you. Good night.
Thank you. Next is Ilse Beal, followed by Sue Flint, followed by Diana Vargas.
Good evening. It was actually quite perfect that the Albuquerque Housing Authority started speaking and gave all those really horrible and depressing facts. I had already intended to try and impress upon you that there is a very specific portion of the homeless population that is just absolutely not considered. Albuquerque started in 2005 with the following the Housing First model, and we agree with that, that that's a good model, that is good to do that. But now you've heard about the backlog. You've heard that there will be three years of waiting list. The waiting list is closed, et cetera, et cetera. I've asked some of the counselors, what would they suggest? What would, what should the tent city residents do? The only suggestions were then, go to the shelters. Find someone who's got land, so let them allow you to stay on that. If you know of anyone with land, please let us know. We're looking again, just so that you know. But then where the shelters are concerned, so many of the people that we work with are not eligible to be in a shelter. So they're immediately excluded from the housing vouchers, they're excluded from the shelters. But then when we're trying to organize a safe spot for them, where they can then actually start finding work, several of our residents have now started finding work because they had a measure of security. We've got people who are studying. So people can then start working at improving themselves. That is impossible if we're chased around the whole time. So, okay, we've not been able to find someone who has land, who would allow us to stay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beal.
Surely you could?
Your time is over. However, there's a question from Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and I want to thank the people who've been volunteering, because I know you guys are putting in a lot of your own time to...
Own resources as well, yeah?
And to help these people. So that needs to be recognized, and I want to recognize that. And also, just want to say that I did read the full proposal that you wrote, which was very well-written, and my hat's off to the folks who contributed to that. There's sort of a summary of it here, I guess, the two-pageer that you left. But that was a very comprehensive report about how we could, we could, as an interim, and we all know it's not the final answer, as an interim, that we could look at, at some sort of organized tent community where it's self-governing and all the, all of the conditions that, or self-imposed conditions that you're proposing for that community. So I really think we do need to continue to look at that. I know that it's not the ideal. And I know that Father Rusty from St. Martin's kind of came around on this issue as well. He at first thought that a tent city was not the answer, and we heard that from a lot of people. But I think in the short term, we should be looking and we should be trying to find such a site. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I encourage the other counselors to read the report. It's not really long, but it's longer than two pages, and it is very comprehensive as to how to move forward on something. Also pointing out the idea and the fact that microhouses and using structural insulated panels are a good way to, to make temporary housing. I mean, we've got a great history of temporary housing in this country after the Hurricane Katrina and so forth. There are all sorts of shelters that were built that were considered temporary, that were not trailers and were not tents. So that's important as well. I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I do want to continue to work with you on finding a site.
Thank you for your words.
Thank you. Next is Sue Flint, followed by Diana Vargas, followed by Bobby Al Campo.
Good evening. My name is Sue Flint. I'd like for my name to be spelt right, please. It's F-L-Y-N-T, not I-N-T. With that being said, I come before you tonight because I put on notice, City Planning, that we intend to file a lawsuit because we've been ignored over the R-09263 that led to the R-1111. I've stood before you so many times, and I'm done, actually, with it. I've got school to finish, and the last time I was here, I was, I waited five hours to speak after being up almost 48 hours. By the passing of that R-1111, it has been misconstrued to everybody in our area that we don't exist. The people next to us, which is called Heller, and they're actually called Cold Front up in Colorado, have been running like they're a commercial development. They hit our property line. They're not a commercial development. They bought the name, and they moved in and started running 18-wheelers. Wilshire is a two-lane highway. We can hardly get out of there. It is hazardous. I've taken it so many times in front of the city. I put it in front of the city council. I put it in front of the CAO. I've took it, excuse me, I took it to City Planning when we had a meeting on the 31st. I've exposed that you have something going on illegally within this, and nobody wants to deal with it. I understand lawsuits, but I've actually tried to save you a lawsuit. Mr. Winter, my friend Bree is very passionate about this, and you may think that I'm the only one that comes before you, but I speak for a lot of people. I come here because I understand what happened, and I've asked you several times to look at this. This was wrong. That R-09263 was wrong. The Comprehensive Zoning Code was wrong. And now we have a city planning department that's trying to make sure that we don't get the justice that we need. We are not going to support you when you run for city council. We are going to go, and we hope not to lose your legacy the way that it's actually been tarnished, but we do not support you as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. And your name is spelled with Y in my list here. And Ms. Songer, I apologize again. Diana Vargas, followed by Bobby Al Campo, followed by Kathy Brown.
Yeah. Oh, yes, it's all nice and fancy. Can you see that, Rob? Cool. Good evening, President Gardner, members of city council. As far as the whole YouTube video for Chief Eden, I really don't think that it was so much that had to do with YouTube itself, but that that happened to be the only form of communication, so I'm not sure what the communication policy actually says about delivering a message that is meant for the public when internet itself is considered a luxury, right? So people that can't afford the internet, or running around with Obama phones, right? Like, they can't access the internet. So it's not so much that it happened just to be on YouTube, but that it was only on YouTube. But again, I don't know what the communication policy says either, but I was wondering what it did, like the Wonder Twins. So Greedy Greenwood and Tom Striker, they came in here, hijacked the city, y'all know it, and like, let's just put it out there, right? Start that real conversation among each other. And, you know, he got $70,000 from the mayor, and then he comes over here and he's like, he needs X amount of dollars totaling to whatever, whatever, right? A bunch of money, a lot. And then, and then he's coming back for a second round totaling like half a million dollars on what? He promised what? So he said he was an expert, that he would deliver a contract that would be the best outcome for Albuquerque, et cetera, et cetera. It's being held up in court. He stole our money, right? So that man is eating $53 steak, staying at Hotel Andalus for $355 a week, or, I'm sorry, at night. $100 for his dog, his dog to stay in a hotel room, right? Beers, margarita, quemaas. So he rolls in here, he's like, rolling dirty, sipping gin and juice, stealing all our money, and nobody says anything. And like, we have shopping carts as a current reality of the affordable housing in Albuquerque. So can we get our money back, one from Greenwood, and just shut him down? Think as a community, do that.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Next is Bobby Al Campo, followed by Kathy Brown, followed by Peter Feibelmann.
So I just clarify, I was in school, so they forgot my last name, so I just put it Al Campo. My name is Robert Murray.
Well, you can't blame me for that.
Yeah, I know. I'm a student at CNN. Last one to say, I've heard a couple of words used a couple of times, and really quite often in regards to the homeless, you know, situation, these people. I'm not talking about these people. I'm talking about me. I am currently homeless. You know, my financial aid didn't get me quite as far as I want, as far as I needed. And that's the situation with a lot of people out there. You've got people that are working full-time jobs, being chased around by, you know, current circumstances, really hard to make ends meet, you know, whenever you gotta spend all day, you know, trying to move from one spot, try to find another spot, and move out of that by the end of the day. But it wears on a person. And, you know, I'm not going to use up all my time. I just want to say, I'm not looking for a handout from anybody. I don't need a handout. What I need is for people to stop slapping me down every time I try to get up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Next is Kathy Brown, followed by Peter Feibelmann, followed by Maro Ibarra.
Good evening, Counselors. It's been a solid year, okay? I mean, it's been a year. It's been a year since James Boyd was shot in the back and murdered. It's been a year since Mary Hawkes was hunted down for three hours and murdered by Jeremy Dear. It's been a year since the DOJ report came out. And I think, you know, after a year, I think we should look at what we've accomplished. And there have been some things accomplished. For one thing, we do have two killers off of the police force. We actually have a couple of people murdering cops charged with murder. But I will tell you this, none of these accomplishments have anything to do with that document that Greedy Greenwood produced. I'll tell you what it has to do with. It has to do with this. It has to do with the citizen's ability to film our officers and the citizen's ability to keep an eye on things. The number of shootings in this city has drastically decreased over the course of a year, and it's not because of that document. It's because of these cameras. They know we're watching, and we are watching. We were watching the other day at a situation over in the Northeast Heights. With the SWAT, they're all geared up, they're going to serve an arrest warrant like they do daily. And one of the officers even had the nerve to tell bystander there that unfortunately, they have the right to take pictures. Well, fortunately, that's what the Constitution allows, and the police department is supposed to be defending the Constitution. And I think it's telling that our police officers think the Constitution is unfortunate.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And one other thing I'd like to ask Mr. Jones, Mr. Rudy Jones, are you gonna run? I'd like to know, are you gonna run? I'd like to hear it from a horse's mouth. Are you gonna run?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next is Mr. Feibelmann, followed by Marco Ibarra, followed by Harry Buckholler.
So these comments concern the item 01420 that you're going to vote on this evening concerning amending the zoning code to allow for secondary dwelling units. My name is Peter Feibelmann. I've lived in the Spruce Park neighborhood for over 40 years, and I'm here to express my concern that degrading the meaning of R1 zoning will negatively impact the quality of life in our historic neighborhood. Correspondingly, it will lower property values. Though I'm not a lawyer, I believe that a government action that reduces the value of my property is in effect a taking. For a taking to be legitimate, the property taken must be used or disposed of in such a manner as to benefit the public welfare or public interest. Our Neighborhood Association Board thinks anything but, having voted unanimously to oppose the zoning amendment under discussion. Not arguable, however, is that a taking should be justly compensated. Assume, for example, that on average, the value of a home in our neighborhood, and there are 250 of them, loses $10,000 as a consequence of the amendment. The city might then be found liable for some $2.5 million in just compensation. Such monies, I would argue, could be implicated. Accordingly, I urge you to reject the zoning amendment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Feibelmann. Next is Marco Ibarra, followed by Harvey Buckholzer, followed by Steve Kramer.
Good evening, councilmen, Mr. President Gardino. I'm here because I'm a resident of Tent City. My name is Marco Ibarra. And, you know, we just got an eviction notice again, so we'll be moving again. Where, I don't know. And, you know, we've been asking the city for a piece of land here in Albuquerque so we can establish a tent city like Camp Hope in Las Cruces. You know, we're asking y'all to give us something, because I'm not just worried about me, I'm worried about other homeless people too. After I'm done, what about the next guy? You know what I mean? We just, I'm just asking for that, you know? If I get housing, I want someone there in place for someone else. You know, because, you know, it's hard, it's hard out here for us out here. We just got an eviction notice, so we're just gonna see what happens from there. You know, I'm asking the city to break down with us, help us out, man. You know what I mean? You guys have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Ibarra. Next is Harvey Buckholzer, followed by Steve Kramer.
My name is Harvey Buckholzer. I'm president of the Union Castle Neighborhood Association, the old country club neighborhood. And I'm also here to voice my objection to O-1420, secondary dwelling units, and I have three points to make. The first one is that an R1 designation for zoning leads to an expectation of single-family dwelling. And that's according to both the sector plan and to the city zoning code itself by definition. Second point is that the zoning department is already overworked and violations, and we would expect that there would be many of them, would be delayed over and over again. Mr. Williams, who attended the last hearing about this, stated that from a practical standpoint, it is very difficult to enforce this event if it happens, and that his department is already at 50% vacancy level and is already overburdened. So as problems arise, as protests arise from neighborhoods, neighbors who don't approve of having a casita next door to them, will go to zoning, it might not ever get settled. The third point is petitions stating that these will be very carefully taken care of. We would hope that would be the case, but we really are very, very careful that, we hope that we will be very, very careful that that would be, that would happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckholzer?
Mr. Buckholzer, you don't necessarily need to respond, but if you'd like, you're welcome to. We had, of course, publicized this for some time, and I appreciate your coming down and speaking twice at the LUPs. I have heard a lot of the concerns. I think what I would like to do is have a discussion about it, because we haven't really had a discussion about it before the full council. And that's my intention tonight, is that we at least make sure that folks up here get to weigh in on what they've heard and all. But we do, you know, I do understand that some neighborhoods, this is a good fit, and some neighborhoods, it might not be. And I just wanna make sure that clear to you and Mr. Feibelmann that I do understand that dynamic, and that's something we're gonna have to tackle.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Next is Steve Kramer, followed by Tad Nemenski, followed by Maria Baptista.
Good evening, council, President Gardino. I just, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but then after the lady from the Housing Authority, I thought it would be appropriate, because she did point out many of the things that you guys have all questioned. It's obvious that there's a problem, and the last time I spoke about Tent City, I didn't feel like I really made the point that no one thinks this is best practice. So I'm not sure, you know, no one's suggesting that. What we're saying is that there's a large gap that exists between the services being offered and the reality of where people are at, and that the camps can really function to plug those gaps and to do exactly what she was talking about, you know, preparing people in terms of getting warrants off them, paperwork, whatever it is that their condition happens to be. And it's not, I'm not suggesting that the camps can do that, I'm saying we have done it, we are doing it right now. We have people that have been able to get out of the camps, get jobs, we have some success stories in there. And then, I mean, there's some in progress right here, right now. So it's not really like, oh, this could work. Like, this is working, and it's working under a lot of unnecessary duress and stress that's being applied to us from outside. Understandably, now we're on the private property, I can't really, we're doing what we can there, you know? But I'm not gonna berate those people because they have their right. But when we are on city or state property and we're being chased around, it's a problem for us. It's a real problem for the people with the mental health issues. And it has seemed to me in all my conversations with the city that the specific piece of land is a problem. Well, I have a piece of land. It's available right now. The city has already looked at it in the past. The city has interest in this land. There's no NIMBY arguments against it, there's nothing against it. It's a perfect spot. We currently can't afford it, but when we're asking for the other pieces of land, like, we can do things, we can, we could pay modest rents, we can figure out a way to cover the liability, like, this isn't, this isn't pie in the sky stuff. Other cities are doing it, and if we're gonna point to them, making references for other examples, we can point to them for making, for references toward the tent cities as well. Like, it's not pick and choose, you can't do that.
Mr. Kramer, your time is up. However, Counselor Benton does have a question, I believe.
So, Mr. Kramer, thanks, and I think you're partly responsible for that document that I was, said was so well put together, so thank you for that. So when we had the, I guess, probably the second iteration of Tent City, at that time, there were some discussions with Albuquerque Rescue Mission about using their parking lot. And they, you know, kind of offered that and then withdrew that offer based, I guess, on a vote of their board or something like that, that they were concerned about liability insurance. And I did look into that, and it sounds like you guys are prepared to negotiate with a nonprofit or a possibly a nongovernmental entity. And I also looked into the fact that, you know, depending on how much it costs, of course, is gonna be an issue with the city, but there's no reason the city couldn't help also with insurance for such a site, to help out someone who would volunteer such a site. So whether it's a city, private, or a nonprofit entity, I think that's something that can be worked out. And so that shouldn't stand in our way of finding a site. And I know the Rescue Mission is in the midst of some changes and expecting to move their feeding program. But the site that you mentioned, could you say where that is?
I cannot at this time. I can in person with you privately. All of our sites get, we have a problem with that when we disclose whether we're moving camps, then APD's there waiting for us as in our last move. So no, I can't, but I can and we'll do that privately, yes.
Well, and you know, when I was on the Highway Department side, I thought, hmm, not a bad site. But whatever, I mean, you know, I don't know what their issues are, why they chose to do that. But yeah, I do wanna continue to work with you on this and I think work with some of the nonprofits, as I said, who have expressed an interest to move forward with some semblance of what you proposed.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And I join Counselor Benton in seeking those answers. And I know it's not gonna be easy, but certainly we'll work on it and so will other councilors. So, thank you.
And it is an open invite to you guys, if you wanna go.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next is Mr. Tad Nemenski, followed by Maria Baptista, followed by Warden Cardella. Cardella.
Can you take this spot off? Thank you. My name is Tad Nemenski. Well, I may tire to bashing, but I won't give up. So now I have, yes, family topic. Which family are we talking? Upstairs on the fifth floor? Well, family, St. Martin's, that's where most our money goes. Now, I listened last week, here I was at the meeting, almost $1 billion in issue, and lots of fun. It was lots of fun right here. Well, what I'm talking about, the $35 million court show, $4 million convention, and, and of course, $60 to $80 million to family and community services. Well, speaking about, anyway, how can you laugh, making fun? I'm not addressing the $90, almost $1 billion budget, you guys. Do we have any accountability? No. No transparency. Waste, abuse, everywhere. How can you look straight into their eyes? Smirky, whatever. I'm sorry. We have to get more honest. I'm talking, well, speaking about honesty, that's another thing, that's dirty work. Downtown Performance Arts Center. Thank you. Next time.
Thank you, Mr. Nemenski. Next is Maria Baptista, followed by Warden Cardella, followed by Barbara Grotis.
President Gardino, and all of you who know me, I wanna say a few things to you this evening. On April 4th, the United States Department of Justice released its findings. Greenwood and Stretcher were hired to represent the city of Albuquerque regarding APD's use of excessive force and to assist in the negotiations with the Department of Justice and in working towards a consent decree. Scott Greenwood and Tom Stryker have failed in those negotiations. Mayor Berry has failed in those negotiations. The city council has failed in those negotiations, and the United States Department of Justice has failed in those negotiations. The very department we were advocating for became the Berry Perry scapegoat. Scott Greenwood threw them under the bus so much that the APD union had to sue to protect their contract. The aggrieved families, parents, advocates, stakeholders said, "Leave out the disparities that go hand in hand with the reforms: racial profiling, frisking and searching, women, seniors, children, the gay community, the homeless, the mentally ill, and the classes of people most affected. We told you so. We have a settlement agreement." However, Judge Brock with a critical lie allowed for fair hearings. He named James Ginger. Never underestimate your constituents. We are many. We are the attorneys, we are the amici, we are the friends of the court. Our briefs are being heard and will enhance the settlement agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Baptista.
And then you will have a consent decree.
Thank you.
Scott Greenwood and Tom Stretcher should not be paid anymore, and their contract should be settled, and that money allocated to the homeless in Albuquerque.
Ms. Baptista, your time is over. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Marden, Cardella, followed by Barbara Grotis and Terry O'Hare.
My name is Marden Cardella. I am also speaking in opposition to O-1420. This proposal could conceivably double the density per acre in R1 neighborhoods in Albuquerque. In the older neighborhoods, lots are generally 50, not 60 feet wide. Therefore, the number of dwelling units per acre is already often higher than the example R1 lot described by the planning department for this proposal. Increased density will strain already overburdened infrastructure and city services. A family is defined in the zoning code as five unrelated people. Therefore, O-1420 would allow 10 people to live on an approved lot and more if some of them were related. A conditional use is a subjective criteria, has a subjective criteria for decision. It is, is it injurious to the adjacent property, the neighborhood, or the community? That's kind of a, I want it, you don't want it. Most conditional uses are, requests are approved in Albuquerque. There is nothing in this proposal, proposed ordinance that would prevent a property owner from obtaining one or multiple variances in order to go around the criteria, the height, the setbacks, the design criteria. This ordinance breaks the promise the city has made to R1 property owners for over 55 years. The promise that our homes are in single-family neighborhoods. The promise that zoning on R1 property can't be changed without going before the city council. Please do not pass this amendment to the zoning code. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cardella. Just a second. Ms. Cardella? No, okay. Counselor Benton?
I just wanted to clarify, it would be physically impossible to double the density under this ordinance.
Not every neighborhood, some neighborhoods.
Every, every R1 property would have to qualify and to fit. So I just wanted to make clear that. Appreciate your coming down, Ms. Cardella, and also for your years of service to the community of the university neighborhoods.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Grotis, followed by Terry O'Hare.
Good evening, President Gardino and councilors. You know, the amount of money that would be required for the city to invest in a little piece of land for some campers to live on wouldn't be very much money compared to, I mean, let's just be real, we haven't built any housing for these 5,000 people that are looking for units since the 1970s. The reality today is that it is little grandmothers and grandfathers and students and lots of people who find themselves homeless in our, in our depressed economy, thanks to the failed leadership of the mayor and the governor in creating jobs and allowing jobs to be developed and spending money for public projects that could employ people and put more money into our communities, helping to alleviate the influx of homeless that we're seeing all over. Drive around our city, you see them everywhere. There are people everywhere. And people like Albuquerque Justice have been working really hard to try to help create a situation, to be a model. And the residents of Tent City have risen to the challenge. These people are exhibiting leadership, community values, they are doing their own policing, they are kicking people out who don't abide by the rules of the camp. You should go over there and see it. It's clean, they're recycling, and have a very good relationship with B.C., with the Burness, Burness County Sheriff's Department. You know, these people in the sheriff's department have been working hard and meeting regularly and protecting the people who are currently camped on private land in the East Mountains area. And I really think that the city could step up on this. There's no reason why we cannot do what other cities have done. Somebody needs to show the mayor that it is possible, we need to have some leadership in the city. The falling asleep CEO, C-A-O over here isn't helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grotis. And our last speaker tonight is Terry O'Hare. Terry O'Hare? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Hello, President and councilmembers. I wanted to actually use this opportunity to invite all of you to get some eco-therapy with me on the trail, on the Boss Skate Trail. So I know you all can't come at once, but if I could help arrange groups of you. What I'm finding is that as I roll this trail... I'm finding is that as I roll this trail, and I've done it several times, it's easier for me to get smaller groups out there. I can't get a hundred people out like other groups can do. But things become apparent, like the surface works, the sense of being by the river, seeing critters, and also seeing the surface. I think that the real effect happens when one is on the trail. And I just thought, you know, instead of me sitting up here talking about this, that it really would be great if it's possible to spend time with every one of you out there. So that's really what I wanted to say, and that I will be contacting you, and hopefully we can arrange it and make this happen over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. O'Hare. Thank you for the invitation.
Bet.
Ms. O'Hare is the last speaker on public comment.